Hello, everyone. Welcome to the City Club of Eugene September 16th, 2022 program representing West Lane on the County Commission. This is the second program of our 2022-2023 programming year, and my name is Karen Knutson. I'm City Club's president. Welcome to everyone here having lunch with us in downtown Eugene today and to our livestream and listening audiences. It is wonderful to have you all here. Support for the City Club is provided by our members and both business and in-kind sponsors. Our diamond sponsors are Kaiser Permanente, the University of Oregon, Peace Health, and Lane Community College, and we receive generous support from the city of Eugene. You too can help to support City Club's mission to build community vision through open inquiry by becoming a member at our website, cityclubofeugene.org. History has its eyes on you. It's a big week for the arts in Eugene. Many of you probably recognize that refrain and others from Linwin Mel Miranda's wonderful musical Hamilton, which is currently at our Center Performing Arts. The opportunity to welcome Hamilton to Eugene in the midst of an election year also coincides with the Holt Center's 40th anniversary, which is a remarkable moment, milestone for us as a community to celebrate and be aware of. About a decade ago, 10 or 15 years ago, I had a chance to read a bit more about the Holt Center's history while working on a renovation at the building. And I just want to share that for a community of our size, and especially in the early 1980s, when we were just over 100,000 people in Eugene, what extraordinary outcome it is to have accomplished a publicly-owned center for the performing arts of the quality that the Holt Center is. That was thanks to a vision within our community to enhance the public good and to the opportunities that would be present here, and that vision has now contributed more than four decades of memories and inspiration. I know we have City Club members and listeners who remember that time in the early 80s to accomplish the Holt Center, and that they would also remember that it wasn't a simply accomplished outcome, and that it actually took many years and dogged support and repeated asks to the public to accomplish that amazing facility. It now presents to our community hundreds of programs, some free to the public, many ticketed at many scales every year. Which brings us back to Hamilton and a reminder that today is the first of City Club's fall election candidate forums and discussions of statewide ballot initiatives. And with that, before introducing today's program coordinator, I'll leave you with a couple of other Hamilton refrains to consider. One, if you stand for nothing, what will you fall for? Dying is easy, young man. The living is harder. And finally, smile more, talk less. And with that, I would like to thank Jennifer James Long for coordinating today's program, and she will introduce today's moderator, KLCC's Brian Bull, as well as our candidate. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jennifer James Long, City Club member. I want to first thank Brian Bull for moderating this discussion and KLCC for their continued support of our programming. Today's program will be about the race for the West Lane County Commissioner seat. The West Lane County Commission District offers a wealth of opportunities for leadership. The district stretches west to the Pacific from Junction City and Veneta, the more densely populated areas of the Lamont Valley. West Lane residents are fishers, farmers, and foresters, served by small businesses with a strip of high-traffic tourist destinations and a concentration of healthcare providers along the coast. Several small school districts and a few rural towns are surrounded by sparsely populated miles of woodlands and family farms. Somehow, the West Commissioner has to master the intricacies of the core social and economic needs of these diverse areas and figure out how to collaborate with the other four commissioners to create policies and programs that work for the whole county. Because no candidate won 51% of the vote in the primary, the two with the highest number of votes are campaigning in the fall election, Ryan Senega and Don Leslie. We invited both candidates to participate in the forum, offering a choice of dates to help voters better understand their approaches to West Lane and the opportunities and challenges in West Lane, but Mr. Senega declined to participate. Ms. Leslie will present her platform and respond to questions from the moderator and the questions from our in-person audience and livestream. Questions can be submitted by the live audience and also texted to 541-852-0302 by those watching the livestream available on the City Club of Eugene YouTube channel. Since Ryan Senega is not attending today, I will read his biography as printed in the press release. Ryan Senega has worked as a farmhand, diesel mechanic, house framer, and an e-web utility contractor. He is a member of the Junction City School Board and serves on its long-range planning committee. He is an active member of the Lions Club and was a volunteer coach for youth teams and a member of the Junction City Athletic Board. He graduated from Junction City High School and earned an associate's degree in diesel technology from the Arizona Automotive Institute. Information about his positions and platform can be found on his campaign website, www.ryan R-Y-A-N senega C-E-N-I-G-A dot com. Don Leslie, who's here with us today, is an environmental engineer with 30 years of experience promoting energy efficiency and cleaning up dirty water. She evaluates the cost-effectiveness of wastewater operations and leads strategic energy management trainings that help wastewater plant operators use energy efficiently to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and save money. She is a member of the Lane County Budget Committee and an executive board member of the Santa Clara Community Organization. She earned a Master's in Science in Engineering from OSU and is licensed by the state of Oregon. Information about her positions on issues facing West Lane and Lane County in general may be found on her website, www.don D-A-W-N Leslie L-E-S-L-E-Y dot org. I'd like to now turn this program over to Brian Bull.
Thank you very much, Jennifer, and welcome, everyone, to the City Club forum. And again, just a quick reintroduction. I am Brian Bull. I am currently the co-interim news director for KLCC 89.7. And we turn now to the questions for Don. These have been prepared in advance of the event. I also invite, near the end of the hour, we're going to make time for people in the audience who have questions to step up to the microphone here to my right and then present a question to the candidate. So with that, our first question is about housing affordability.
Brian?
Oh, yes.
Um, Leslie would like to make her opening.
Oh, I am so sorry. Sorry. When you turned it to me, I thought it was questions.
Sorry.
All right, never mind. We're going to edit this out. All right. Was I supposed to introduce you?
Should I introduce her?
Okay.
So it'll be a seamless introduction.
Okay. But I don't have to repeat the bio.
Right.
All right. All right. Well, without further ado, we have our West Lane County Commissioner candidate, Don Leslie.
Thank you. Thank you to the City Club of Eugene for inviting me here today and for the important service you provide in building community vision. Thank you to KLCC for informing our community about important current events of all kinds, and thank you to everyone attending and listening. Healthy democracy depends on citizen participation and candidate transparency, and I'm thrilled to be here with you to help our democracy thrive. Neighborhood meetings are turning into shouting matches. A network of secret safe houses is forming to help people get from one state to another to access basic reproductive healthcare. Voting rights are under assault. Elected leaders and their staff are under assault. Scientific knowledge is being denied to benefit a few wealthy people. Elected leaders from Florida to Oregon are spewing lies to rile up people's fears. Our democracy is under threat. I am Don Leslie, and with a fierce sense of urgency, I am running for Lane County Commissioner. I have been an environmental engineer, working on sustainable water and energy projects for almost 30 years. Meanwhile, I can no longer sit on the sidelines while critical challenges escalate in our community: lack of affordable housing, impacts of climate change, public safety challenges, a mental health crisis, water quality and quantity problems, and wages that don't keep up with the cost of living. I'm also deeply concerned about efforts to exert government control over people's most basic and private and personal healthcare decisions. Women are paying attention. The future of our community is on the ballot on November 8th. For over a year, I've been knocking on doors throughout the West Lane District: Republican doors, Democratic doors, independent doors, non-affiliated doors. It is striking to me that across all these so-called political divides, we all care about many of the same things. As Commissioner, I'll especially dedicate my efforts to moving the county forward on affordable housing, finding stable, long-term funding for rural sheriff's patrols, and on strengthening and implementing the Climate Action Plan. Of course, there are many other important priorities as well. I've mentioned some of them, and I look forward to taking your questions and discussing your priorities in depth. You need to know that I'm the only candidate in this race who has earned the backing of a long list of lawmakers, from Congressman Peter DeFazio to our next Congresswoman and Labor Commissioner Val Hoyle, to Oregon Senate President Pro Tem James Manning, and Oregon's House Majority Leader Julie Fahy, among many others. I'm the only candidate in this race who has earned the endorsements of mayors, city councilors, and business leaders in Junction City, Veneta, Florence, and Eugene. I am so proud and honored to have earned the endorsements of many trusted labor unions, including AFSMI, SEIU, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, educators, carpenters, plumbers, and many others. And at this critical time, while my opponent joins the ranks of extremists turning back the clock on women's rights and freedoms, I'm very proud to have the endorsement of the Oregon, of Pro-Choice Oregon, Mother PAC, and the National Organization for Women, because they know I'm the only candidate in this race who will protect women's right to control our own bodies. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you today, and I look forward to hearing from you what you care about. For those in this room, for those of us who are not in this room today, you can engage with our campaign at donleslie.org, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Don Leslie. Again, we will be taking questions throughout the program on the City Club of Eugene's YouTube channel, and also you can text the following phone number, 541-852-0302. Again, that is 541-852-0302. We also have members of our audience that will like to ask questions. Near the end of the hour, we have a microphone there that you can stand to, and I will call upon you when we are ready. First question for you, Don. Housing affordability is a serious issue across the county, including rural communities. The waitlist for a housing voucher exceeds 1,000 families in Lane County. As a Commissioner, what levers would you use at the county level to address affordability in our communities?
Thank you for that question. It is, housing affordability is a concern throughout the district. I have been impressed with many of the recent efforts made by Lane County to address homelessness, such as repurposing hotels and other existing buildings, ensuring low-income units are included in new development, supporting public-private partnerships like Square One Village's Peace Village, and collaborating with the city of Eugene to build permanent supportive housing like the Now at 11th and Charnelton. Remember, the 50% of the unhoused people in Lane County have jobs, and they are unhoused because even, because their wages are not sufficient to, to meet their needs, to get them into even the most basic shelter. So as I think about this, it just, I want to emphasize this connection between homelessness and affordable housing, and also the crisis that's being experienced among families on this topic, as many generations of people share, have, or share housing because their young, younger members of the family can't afford to move out on their own. More needs to be done, in particular, the rural-facing portions of the county's Affordable Housing Action Plan need to be implemented. Homelessness and affordable housing are not just problems in Eugene and Springfield. It's hurting Deadwood, Mapleton, Florence, all the rural areas and small towns throughout Lane County. If I'm fortunate enough to be elected to serve as West Lane County Commissioner, I'll get right to work encouraging the evaluation of county-owned, underutilized properties for housing, investigating how we can pilot community land trusts and limited equity cooperatives in rural communities, and looking into what it would take to pilot an affordable rural ADU program. Many agricultural producers and small forest land owners have shared with me their difficulty in constructing worker housing, and I'd like to help solve that. Cottage Grove offers a shining example of how you can fit in a variety of types of affordable housing in a small community: Square One Tiny Homes Village, community land trust model with Development Northwest, a memory care expansion allowing folks to live independently for longer, Veterans Housing Collaboration with Homes for Good, and more traditional permanent supportive housing.
All right. Our next question. A major point of discussion in your race has been the so-called urban-rural divide, with your opponent stating that, quote, "Our rural way of life is under attack from urban politicians," end quote. Do you think that rural voices in Oregon are underrepresented in government? And how would you, as a representative of a largely rural district, explain the unique needs of rural Oregon to a broader audience?
Thank you for that very important question. The Rural Commissioner has a key role to play in representing the voices of, of the rural parts of the district, because it's easy for, it's easy for, if we didn't have those rural commissioners, we would have, you know, Eugene and Springfield only, only at the table. But we have two rural commissioners in Lane County, and if the rural areas in Lane County don't feel represented, I would point them to the last 12 years that they've represented at the board, and, and just suggest that, that the person in that position is, is the reason why they don't feel represented. We, the urban-rural divide, I think, is an unfortunate way to talk about things. I have knocked on doors throughout the district, thousands of doors throughout the district, and it's clear to me that the urban areas only thrive when the rural areas are thriving and vice versa. We, we need each other. The urban and the rural parts, the areas have, have grown together, and we need, we need each other, and we continue to need to work together to create solutions for everyone. One of the things that's important to me is supporting, for example, supporting rural agriculture, to protect farmland out in the rural areas, because I would like to see us be able to grow more of our food locally, and we have to protect the Class 1 and Class 2 soils throughout this district so that we can be growing, growing more of our food locally and achieving the economic benefits that that creates for folks.
As a follow-up to that, Don Leslie, are there any common ground issues that you think the rural and urban communities of West Lane County can unite upon?
Absolutely. There are economic development opportunities throughout the county that, that play off of each other. Small businesses grow and thrive in the urban areas and also out in the rural areas, especially when we promote rural broadband access, because every business in modern times, in order to thrive, needs internet access, whether you're a farmer, whether you're a manufacturer, every kind of business needs internet access, and it's just not universally available out in the rural areas. So the, an emphasis on rural broadband is going to help the rural areas thrive and help economic opportunities, as I said, in the rural areas, and the development of more local food and food, agriculture and food production supports, supports the towns and cities in the district as well, because growing our own food locally leaves us less vulnerable to supply chain disruptions, for example. And also, we emit fewer greenhouse gases when we grow our food locally, and it doesn't have to travel as far to get to our tables. So that's another example of, of the ways that we, the rural and the urban areas support each other.
Thank you. You're listening to the Candidate Forum with Don Leslie, who's running for West Lane County Commissioner. A reminder that Ryan Senega was invited to participate but declined. If you have questions that you would like to submit to our candidate, please text 541-852-0302. Again, the phone number is 541-852-0302. And we also have people monitoring the comments section of the City Club of Eugene's YouTube channel, which is livestreaming this right now. The next question. In recent years, the county has devoted significant resources to its Climate Action Plan. Given the global nature of this crisis, where do you think the county can have the greatest impact in this area?
So the Climate Action Plan, I'm delighted to see the county develop a Climate Action Plan. It was, it was a long time coming. It was previously blocked by the previous board. In recent years, they have finally been able to move forward on it over the objections of the sitting Commissioner in this seat, who, I should point out, has handpicked my opponent, who is running for this seat. So just over, over those folks' objections, we've moved forward with a Climate Action Plan, and we're starting to make progress. It's overdue. It's critically important. We need to transition to a green, both to, reducing greenhouse gases is important and also being prepared for the now inevitable impacts of climate change that we're already living, in fact, we've been living for quite some time. Agriculture has been suffering the impacts of what's going on, a 14-year drought, and we've all been living with the impacts of wildfires. So we know that the impacts are here, and they are challenging us and going to continue to challenge us going forward. So our Climate Action Plan has to prepare us to both do what we can to reduce greenhouse gases and also prepare our communities better for the impacts of, of climate action and getting ready to take care of each other. Is it, did I miss a piece of that question?
No, actually, I think you've covered it pretty well, but I do have a follow-up.
Okay.
We have seen recent changes in fire intensity over the last few years, which is attributed to climate change and increased drought conditions across the Pacific Northwest. And of course, just two years ago, we saw the worst wildfire season on record in Oregon, affecting a lot of communities, including nearby Mackenzie River Corridor and of course, talent in Phoenix to the south of us. So it seems like climate change, global warming, those are issues that are going to be with us for a long time, if not a new normal, so to speak. So in your assessment, Don Leslie, are there ways that communities in West Lane can prepare and accommodate this increased wildfire risk going forward?
That's a great question. It's a really important question, and it's an ever-increasingly important question. The county can help folks understand that we're going to be living with fire. It's part of our world going forward, so we need to be prepared. And commissioners and staff need to be working to educate people, so that means always being two weeks ready, getting word out, especially to rural folks, they should always be at Level 1, and power shut-off preparedness. Some of this, the county can help educate and prepare folks, and some of it comes down to personal responsibility. But helping folks transition to understanding that this is our new normal, it's not going away, it's the new world that we will be living in for quite some time, especially at that wildland-urban interface. So as a Commissioner, I will work to help to bring home state funding for emergency management teams, and I will speak with members of the community on a regular basis and, and participate with those teams and participate in getting, helping folks transition to this new awareness and new understanding, finding resources to help folks get ready, and also to, to developing conversations between other players. We saw the, we know that, for instance, the Lane Event Center can serve and will be serving an important role in disaster relief and in dealing with emergencies, and I think we need to be prepared, for instance, for schools to serve community resource functions in addition to simply educating our kids. As we build new schools and as we upgrade schools, we need to be aware of the ways they can serve our community as, as triage centers or hubs, maybe water sources, maybe, maybe shelter. I don't know, there's, there's, there's lots and lots of ways that, that important centers like schools and other community buildings can be part of emergency management planning. And so a Commissioner that's aware of that and, and having, developing relationships with all of those community resources in the cities and towns and also in the rural areas, making sure to always keep rural areas front of mind, that we don't, they don't get left behind in these conversations, and that they're ready, as we all need to be ready for whatever comes our way.
All right. We're going to shift now to the topic of tourism. Both on the Oregon coast and agritourism closer to the valley, there's an increasingly significant portion of the region's economy that both these areas are playing into. The county commission recently discussed increasing tourism taxes to fund various projects, which includes a new stadium for the Eugene Emeralds at the county fairgrounds. Would you support that proposal, and how can the county make the most of the growth in tourism?
Tourism has been an important part of our economy, and it's going to hopefully continue to be an important part of our economy. We are blessed, we who are blessed to live here know what a beautiful and important place, important natural resources we have, how inspiring it is. I feel fortunate to live here, and I'm inspired to spend time around our natural areas, and it doesn't surprise me, and I feel very proud that folks want to come and share this environment with us and share in the cultural and artistic opportunities, as well as the natural areas that inspire all of us. So tourism is, is, is hopefully going to continue to be an important part of our economy, and we are, you know, well, we, we, it's good to be supporting it. The increase in, the proposed increase in the TLT, the, the transient lodging tax that is proposed, is a good way to provide some resources to invest in, in those tourism, those tourism opportunities. And the stadium is one piece that's on the table, but what I'm encouraged by when I look at how the commissioners are structuring that 2% increase, is they're being very careful to structure in flexibility with that. So they're not committing that 2% tax increase. They, and remember that, just to, to make sure folks understand, that the, the tax increase, if you will, is a lodging tax, so it's, it's, it is applied to people who come from out of the area to, for lodging here. So some of it will be applied to hotel rooms or, say, RV hookup kinds of places. So it's, it's a, it's a tax directed specifically at the folks coming to use our tourism resources. It won't be felt by residents. And so this, commissioners are being careful to structure that to allow maximum flexibility as they assess, as they assess the, assess the opportunity that, that the stadium provides and other opportunities, other opportunities going forward, such as the possibility of an indoor stadium at the Lane Event Center. The Lane Event Center is a jewel that is entering into a, a master planning process, which is important, because I think it's been an underutilized and under-resourced jewel of our community. So we know it can serve a tourism function, such as a stadium, such as an indoor sports arena. The fact that the commissioners are taking care to structure that 2% increase, to not lock them into any one use of it, I think is important, because we have things to assess, like what is the risk of, like, there's no deal on the table yet as far as what that stadium would look like, and we want to make sure that if we invest in it, that we invest it wisely and make sure, ask questions like, you know, what's the commitment by the M's to stay here? I would love to see the M's stay here. I think a lot of people would like to see the M's stay here. We want to invest in a facility if it makes sense, and they're going to continue to stay here. So there's risks to be evaluated, there's details to be worked out, and because we don't know what that looks like... don't know what that looks like yet, the commissioners are wisely choosing to structure that 2% increase with a lot of flexibility so they can use it as effectively as possible. I support that.
All right, thank you very much. One follow-up to that, that's associated with tourism and hospitality, has to do with the fact that we are still in the midst, unbelievably so, but still in the midst of a pandemic. Even with the Omicron variant, there is still the risk that people feel of new variants developing. And of course, we have monkeypox on the horizon and we also have other ailments, including flu. There's been a huge economic impact on many communities, especially those in restaurants and hotels. And even as we feel that the pandemic may be beginning to wane, there's still a lot of communities that have seen hotels and restaurants, diners shutter or have to really limit their operations. So, going forward, how do you think that the hospitality and many of the related sectors can rebound from this? Are there ways that the West Lane County Commissioner can support that?
Yes, the West Lane County Commissioner has an important role in supporting all kinds of economic development going forward. We don't have a lot of economic development dollars, but we have a lot of economic development leverage. Promoting conversations between stakeholders is a key part of what we can do. So, when I've talked to business owners, including restaurant owners and other kinds of business owners, lots and lots of levels of the economy were impacted by the COVID pandemic and continue to be impacted by that. When I talk to, to business owners about what they, what are the barriers to them thriving and ultimately growing and being on solid footing economically, they talk a lot about workforce development, you know, having, finding qualified staff and specifically back to that affordable housing piece, especially out in Florence, but throughout the district. Affordable housing is actually a big barrier to economic development and to businesses thriving because there are plenty of business owners who have trouble finding and, finding staff and also keeping staff because staff is having trouble finding affordable housing. So, back to that affordable housing question, can we bring in more federal and state support for building more affordable housing? Can we be more creative about, about affordable, bringing affordable housing, again, out to not just inside Eugene Springfield, but affordable housing out in the district, in the small towns and the rural areas, rural ADUs I mentioned, repurposing, the aspects of the, of the county's affordable housing action plan, fully implementing that plan includes bringing in more dollars and also being more nimble about where we can put affordable housing and building more of all kinds of housing. More of all kinds of housing is needed throughout the district. And that is named, repeatedly named in my discussions with business owners. They tell me if I could, if I could find the right staff and, you know, if I could, and if I, my staff could have a place, affordable places to live, that would help me grow my business.
Thank you. Finally, a reminder to people in our in-house audience to please mute your phones or power them all together because sometimes we can pick that up as we're trying to have our forum here. And also, a reminder for our in-house audience that we have a microphone standing there. So, if anyone here has a question that they would like to pose to candidate Don Leslie, you're more than welcome to come up and ask that question. Moving on to public transportation. Public transportation west of Vanita is practically non-existent, with a single van making two trips from Florence to Eugene daily, with a schedule that doesn't allow for the typical nine-to-five style work period. Do you think that the county should do more to coordinate service to more locales?
I would, I have heard from many residents in Deadwood and Mapleton and in Florence and other parts of the district, Junction City, that, that this is a problem, for sure. And I don't have a set solution for it. And I do know that more public transportation would help, not just help folks get to and from work, have expanded business opportunities, but lots and lots of folks, especially with the aging community on the coast, have to get into the valley for medical appointments and other kinds of things and it would help tremendously with, with those kinds of needs. I think we can be looking at, I would like to see the county bring in federal and state dollars to help support more public transportation, yes, to improve that, that network throughout the district and throughout the county.
All right. Are you the quacking person?
I don't think he's quacking.
Well, you'd like to ask a question. Hello, would you be so kind as to state your full name and where you're from and your question, please?
Yes, I'm Paul Thompson. I'm, I live in Eugene. I'm a city club member for a number of years. Don, thank you very much for showing today. It does bring to mind the old Woody Allen adage that 95% of succeeding in life is showing up. So, I appreciate it very much. I'm interested in public safety.
Yes.
And specifically, I'm always alarmed when I hear the statistics about what the response time is for the public safety individuals in the county because there's so few of them and so on. Do you have a specific plan for improving that situation and can you give us some specifics?
Thank you for that question. It's critically important that response time is too long. Public safety has been under-resourced for quite some time with the decrease and the instability of rural schools funding, secure, excuse me, secure rural schools funding. So, I think it's critically important to stabilize the funding for, to increase and stabilize the funding for rural patrols. Recently, the commissioners were able to find federal, to get federal dollars from ARPA funds to increase by eight sheriff's department employees to apply to that, that problem among others. And it's not enough and we need to find more. And so, I would work hard, we, our federal delegation, the, our legislators at the state level and at the federal level have been working hard to bring home, to, again, increase and stabilize that federal support for it. And I think that's where it needs to come from. I wish I had an easy, quick fix, but it really does come, I think, down to bringing in the federal dollars. I will say, though, another piece of this in talking with Sheriff Harold is that far too much criminal, criminal justice employee time is taken, taken up with dealing with folks in mental health. The behavioral health crisis that we're experiencing throughout the county and really farther, but throughout Lane County stretches an already stretched public safety system even thinner because they end up responding to calls related to people dealing, people in mental health crisis. So, being able to bring better, the Behavioral Health Stabilization Center that the county, that the county is close to, to citing and implementing and we're not, it's not open yet, but that's going to be a piece of solving that. And just bringing in more dollars to support behavioral health treatments so that folks who are having a behavioral health crisis are, we're taking care of them in a more appropriate and more cost-effective way than having sheriff's deputies and police officers having to deal with that.
We have about 15 minutes left for Q and As before I turn the program back to Jennifer. And we have another gentleman here at the microphone. Can you please state your name, where you're from and your question, please?
I'm Jerry Smith, a longtime city club member. I very much appreciate all that Don Leslie has said at this point. The issue that I'm most concerned with and have been identified with for years is homelessness and it's far beyond the county's ability to help. It's far beyond the state's ability to help. And we should always have a current resolution in Congress saying, for God's sakes, there's a crisis. There are people on the street who are mentally ill, screaming at the birds, stealing because they're hungry. You know, I see this man on Coburg Road. He's got long white hair and a white beard. He's as skinny as you can imagine. He stands on two crutches with a single sign that says, "Help." H-E-L-P, help. And there is no place that I can take him. There is no agency that helps people like that. It's just, and he's just one of, I see dozens during the week of 70-year-old women that are so demended that, that you can hardly understand what they want from you and who come into our store for clothes and free clothes and food and don't really know what they want and argue with everybody and are difficult to leave and there's nobody to call. You know, if you call cahoots, you're lucky. If they're, they're so understaffed that they'll be there four hours later, which doesn't do anything for your immediate crisis of a schizophrenic woman screaming at you. And the police say, when they pick up somebody like that, that they take them to the hospital and in an hour and a half, they are back on the streets.
Right.
One morning, when I was trying to deal with someone who was screaming he wanted to kill somebody, the police arrived, took his weapon away. And I said, he just, he told me his mental health history, that in fact, as a young person, he'd been institutionalized for killing somebody. And the police officer was a veteran. It was Sunday morning at 8:30. He said, "I've already seen five mental health crises this morning. If I take him to the hospital, they'll just turn him loose."
I apologize for interrupting, but we do have other people wanting, is this a question or a comment?
I want to, one more thing. Somebody should be writing grants at the county. I don't know that it's being done, going after federal money, after state money and after foundation money. And I appreciate your point of view.
Jerry, thank you for that question. I hear the pain in your voice and I feel it myself with my personal experience, living in this community and encountering the folks that I encounter on a daily basis, encountering the folks that I encountered volunteering at the Eagan Warming Center in the coldest nights of the year. And I hear and feel that pain at the doors when I talk with folks, Republicans, Democrats, non-affiliated, independent folks, independent voters. This, this, the divide goes away where a lot of us, in a lot of pain and suffering over this, of course, minor compared to the pain and suffering of the people who are living it. We didn't get here overnight and, and we can't solve it overnight. I, I do see the county working very hard to bring in and has been successful at bringing in more federal and state dollars to support, the Behavioral Health Stabilization Center is exactly designed for that, to be a place, exactly what you're talking about. Where can we bring these people? Well, when the Behavioral Health Stabilization Center is fully funded and where the county's working hard on, on fully funding it, that will be the place to take them. And that will be a place with wraparound services to get them the help that they need. There is a, there is an emotional and spiritual aspect of this. We all do better when we take care of each other. And just speaking as an engineer, I will say it is not cost-effective to not take care of them either because, because the criminal justice system and emergency rooms and wandering in the streets are the least cost-effective way to deal with it anyway. So, we're all going to be healthier when we are doing a better job taking care of each other and the mental health crisis is a critically important piece of that. The county is working on it. As, as your, as your county commissioner, I will work diligently to bring more dollars to this problem. I want to point out, I was encouraged to learn that the Behavioral Health Stabilization Center will have a juvenile side or a juvenile piece of it. Children can be brought there, youth in crisis can be brought there as well. It's not just services for adults, so that's super important because our young people are in crisis as well. Does that solve it overnight? No, it does not. But we absolutely are all, we all suffer from this because it hurts all of our hearts when we, when we live among this crisis.
Thank you for the very thoughtful and important question. Moving on, we have another gentleman here at the microphone, a full name and where you're from and your question, please.
My name is John Belcher. I'm a city club member and I'm also a resident of West Lane County, although I don't get to vote in this election, unfortunately, because of reapportionment. But, thank you for attending our meeting. And it's very unfortunate that your opponent chose not to. His absence speaks volumes. But I have a question and that is about your experience knocking on doors in West Lane County. What issue did folks raise that surprised you the most and what are you going to do about it?
An easy one.
What am I going to do about it? It did occur to me driving over here, John, that the last time I came was March or April and there were four of us here. And now, in September, I'm the only one who dares to come back and face y'all. So, you might want to check yourselves a little bit. If you want folks to keep coming, you might want to think about, no, just kidding. No, I appreciate the question. I have to think back, you know, what has surprised me the most at the doors? What has surprised me the most at the doors is the piece that I've already alluded to is how, how little difference there is between a Republican door and a Democrat door and a non-affiliated door and an independent door. The voter registration, I used to think, or the age, you know, you walk up to the door, you sort of know you're going to be talking to an older person or a younger person. It surprised me to see how much, to your question, Jerry, how much pain everybody is feeling about the unhoused, mentally ill folks in our community who are, who we are clearly failing. We are clearly failing to take care of them, some of the most vulnerable people in our community. So, that surprised me. It surprised me, one difference between, I ran for this seat eight years ago, and one thing that changed quite dramatically in this, in this election is I hear, well, one is the multi-generational piece. Lots and lots of 20-somethings, 30-somethings, 40-somethings, 50-somethings have moved back in with mom and dad. And I first thought maybe it was going to be to take care of elderly people. It's because they've been priced out of their housing in many cases. That has surprised me. How many people are living in multi-generational housing that really would rather not be because it's tight and it's challenging and it's for financial necessity? That surprised me. And it surprises me how, again, across this political spectrum, how much polarization fatigue there is. People are tired of politicians arguing with each other and pointing fingers and demonizing each other. So, that surprised me, that, you know, that, how much that, that plays into the doors. I think we're ready, but what that tells me is we're ready to work together. And I want to be, I will be a commissioner who has an open door and listens to all perspectives and I want to find where we agree and I want to start working from there. Because when I spend time at the door, listening to someone with an open mind, I can always find something we agree on. And from that place where we agree, we can solve anything together and we must solve things together because we are facing some very, very critical issues, from climate action to the mental health crisis, public safety, these things I've mentioned, they don't go away when we fight with each other. They only can be solved when we work together. And my approach to that is to be here, to show up with you and to listen and to take the hard questions and to show up at the Vanita Chamber of Commerce Forum this week where my opponent also did not show up and take the hard questions and listen and look for where can we agree, what can we accomplish together? That is how I will be your commissioner.
We have time for just probably a couple more questions. A quick reminder that if you wish to text a question in, the number is 541-852-0302. We have someone at City Club checking that line and so they can just walk up the question to me as need be. And also, the City of, City Club of Eugene's YouTube channel, if you wish to pose a question, you can put it in the comments section for our candidate, Don Leslie, for West Lane County Commissioner. And we have another person standing by and please, again, your full name, where you're from and your question.
Jerry Morcello, Eugene resident since 1974. Don, I also am disappointed that your opponent Don, I also am disappointed that your opponent did not show up today for here. Do you have any particular comments about areas of agreement or disagreement that, with your opponent, that you would like the audience to know about?
Thank you for that question, Jerry. We disagree deeply and fundamentally on protecting women's personal freedom. I don't believe the government should be involved in people's healthcare decisions. A woman came to our table, we had a table in Vanita recently, and a young woman came up and registered to vote because she wanted to vote for Don Leslie because she didn't like the idea of the government being in her uterus. And as commissioner, I will do everything I possibly can to keep the government out of her uterus and all of our, is it uteri? We, we differ fundamentally on science. I believe in science. I have been protecting human health and the environment as an environmental engineer for almost 30 years. The work that I do is part of why we don't have cholera and typhoid in our communities in the United States. Science works. Vaccinations work. You can look at the vaccine, you can look at the death rates between the the states and counties that were responsible and followed the science on, on the COVID pandemic and when the states and in communities that stepped up and followed the science and got people vaccinated have far, far, far lower illness and and death rates. So does it, do the vaccines protect us 100%? No, neither do seat belts. But I don't hear people losing their stuff about seat belts. So I think it's important to to be guided by science. I believe in science, and that is clearly not a, a priority or a, or a belief in, by my opponent. Another key place would be workers' rights. My opponent does not seem to understand that the minimum wage is important, for example, and has, has shared in, in forums that, or maybe a radio show, that, that the minimum wage is for teenagers. 50% of women, of minimum wage earners are raising children. So I believe in workers' rights. I believe in supporting apprenticeships and improving, improving wages and benefits for workers because, because family wage jobs support the whole community. And protecting workers' rights helps all of us.
We are just about at time, but I have one more individual here who will need to do this very quickly. Full name and where you're from, please.
Thank you. Sandra Bishop, city club member and past president. You talked about housing, and you talked a little tiny bit about the climate plan that the county has a long time coming, and it doesn't seem to be in place yet. So Vanelle, the housing development on 11th across from the Catholic Church, took down a massive evergreen tree. I think it was, was some sort of a, a redwood. It had stood on that site for 200, maybe 300 years. And I guess the question is, will you, as a commissioner and as a kind of establishment Democratic candidate, when will you start prioritizing protection of the environment and slowing or trying to do any mitigation for climate change over economics? That was purely an economic decision. So is there, is there any way?
All right, thank you. We are really short on time. I apologize.
Yeah. So when we prioritize climate change rather than economics?
Thank you for that question. It is important to, well, a healthy economy depends on a healthy environment. And all of our climate action needs to focus on the overall health of the environment. And that includes restoring natural ecosystems and in doing the best we can to avoid, to avoid impacting natural ecosystems. I would like to see our building and our planning looking towards restorative approaches, protecting our, our forests, protecting our farmland, and looking to restore, restorative solutions. And those decisions have to look at things globally rather than one tree at a time. And I would like to see us investing in, for instance, planting a whole lot more trees a whole lot more places. But that takes an overall planning, carefully planned approach. It's, 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 you have to look at the whole and and look at the whole in the context of the needs of the community. We, we must take better care of this place, this great green earth we call home, or we can't have a healthy economy or a healthy community until we also take care of the ecology that supports us. So that's a general, I mean, this, this, there's a lot to that question, and we're, and we're short on time, but I would look forward to working with you to, to find better solutions where we do a better job of protecting things. We've clearly not been protecting things well enough to this point, and we are going to need to do a better job going forward.
I would like to thank West Lane County Commissioner Candidate Don Leslie for her time. And a, and a reminder for those who may be tuning in late, her arrival, candidate Ryan Senega was invited to participate, was invited to participate in this forum, but he declined. And while no one is obligated to participate in a candidate's forum, there is some benefit for voters to see how candidate presents their viewpoints and counterpoints as that will, how, how they will operate in that stop position. Cadence, demeanor, and their ability to express their views is something you just can't glean from a press release or a campaign website. And voters often want that sense of interaction with a candidate that can create a connection or an impression. So here's hoping going forward that there will be a return to participation in these forums. And I turn it now to Jennifer.
Thank you, Brian, so much for your wonderful moderation today. My name is Karen Knutson. I'm City Club's president, and this has been the September 16th, 2022 City Club of Eugene, representing West Lane on the county commission. Before we thank our candidate in attendance today one last time, I would like to recognize City Club's diamond sponsors. Kaiser Permanente exists to provide high-quality, affordable healthcare services and to improve the health of our members and the communities that we serve. More information is available at kp.org. The University of Oregon has helped Oregonians to question critically, think logically, reason effectively, communicate clearly, act creatively, and live ethically since 1876. And you can find more information at uoregon.edu. Peace Health has been proud to serve Eugene, Lane County, and beyond as your hometown healthcare partner for more than 80 years. The Peace Health mission is to keep you and your family healthy, and you can learn more at peacehealth.org. Lane Community College transforms lives through learning, and LCC provides comprehensive, accessible, high-quality educational opportunities that promote student success. For more information, please visit lanecc.edu. And we are grateful for the generous support that City Club receives from the city of Eugene. I would also like to acknowledge today's gold sponsors, Network Charter School and Sacred Earth Botanicals. And thank you to our in-kind sponsors, KRVM 91.9 Radio, Pack Info, and Simplified Computing LLC, and Dot Dotson's Photography. A special thank you to our award-winning public radio station, KLCC FM 89.7, for airing City Club programs on Monday evenings at 7 o'clock. Our programs are always available on our YouTube channel, our Facebook page, as well as by podcast. And next week, on Friday, September 23rd, City Club will welcome ethnohistorian and Oregon State Professor David Lewis, archaeologist Rick Pettigrew, and retired professor and historian Douglas Card for a program about an initiative to change Lane County's name. We hope you will join us for what promises to be a very interesting and educational discussion. More information about this program and future programs at City Club can be found on our website, cityclubofeugene.org. We invite everyone to join us here in downtown Eugene at our 2022 venue, the First United Methodist Church at 1376 Olive Street. And we invite everyone to participate, ask questions, and be as engaged as possible with this work of our democracy and this important election season. Finally, thank you to today's participant in this candidate forum, West Lane County Commissioner Candidate Don Leslie, for joining us today and sharing your thoughts at City Club. We appreciate it. And it's been a pleasure to welcome you all today. Thank you for joining us. Please take care, and we look forward to seeing you next week.